I'm going to officially call this Vader City Council meeting to order and express appreciation to all those present who made an effort to be here, the media, law enforcement representatives, and the Park Board chairman. Obviously, not a packed house, a summer schedule, I'm sure has an impact on things. Let's proceed with that call to order with the roll call.
What time is it?
Let's say 6:35.
Okay. All right. Of course, Andy Wilson is usually first, but he is excused as since he asked for that before. Okay. And then Mark Fettison?
Present.
Okay. Justin Olson?
Present.
Joe Schei?
Present.
And Kevin Flynn?
Has he contacted anybody to excuse?
I hear a car pulling in, it may be him.
Yeah, and did you call me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Smith.
I am back here.
Yes.
Perfect timing.
Wow. Buzzer was still buzzing.
We have just called your name to see if you were here.
I'm present. Last person has to buy the beverage.
Water's down the hill.
What's it called?
Dip it out of the cup. Okay, well, we do have a call, so with that, we'll proceed, and it will be my privilege to offer the invitation at tonight's meeting, which is our new policy, so I would invite you to join with me as I offer that. Our dear Father in Heaven, we are so very grateful for the privilege which is ours to meet under such pleasant circumstances in this Vader City Council meeting. We're mindful of the great privilege which is ours in this free land to offer a prayer prior to a public meeting, which is one of the great freedoms we enjoy in our Constitution. We're grateful for the inspiration which you so kindly offered our founding fathers and for the courage they demonstrated as they crafted the Constitution, which grants us the freedom of religion and our right to worship according to our individual consciences. Now, we pray that as we deliberate on important matters relating to our community, that we might be inspired and that we would be able to discern the rightness and correctness and truth relating to the important subjects that we will deal with, and that the decisions we make would reflect thy will and be of best benefit to the residents of our community. And we're grateful for the privilege we have to serve and pray that we might do so in a way which enables our community to prosper and to thrive. Bless us in our efforts and the residents here that they too would benefit from the decisions we make and be grateful for the service we render. And we offer this prayer humbly and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you. It will now be our privilege to rise and for our pleasure to leave you, invite all to do so. And what Mr. Fettison, so leave it.
My pleasure to leave you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'll dive into the mayor's report. I was getting accustomed to the remodeling which is taking place in our council chambers. I hope that you've noted some of the equipment that we purchased at a bargain from the state, what do they call that?
Surplus.
Recycling surplus center. We got for a song and a dance, basically, with a couple of new chairs for our staff.
Who sang and danced?
And...
I just wondered who sang and who danced.
Well, if it's a dog and pony show, I'd be so. But I think it's uplifted the face of our facility, and we actually have two American flags. Somebody can boast of that. So we thank Joe for orchestrating that effort. And our goal is to ultimately replace the carpet, which is long overdue. The funding has been allocated for it, so eventually it will happen. So with that, it would be my privilege to report on the Fourth of July festivities. I'm sure that most of you participated and some are all of them. Kudos need to be conveyed to Judy Costello and others who helped to make that event a success. I know members of the Park Board contributed, our public works employee, and members of the council included, and myself, of course, all made it a fun event. Several thousands of dollars were donated by members of the community. It may be one of the few city sanctioned events that is financed solely by members of the community. The fireworks were, in short, spectacular, not only for communities but for those in attendance. It was the closest thing to real-life military involvement. For some of the sidelines, you observe some of the fireworks that did impact members of the community, and it's part of what you buy into when you go to such events. But my feeling is it's wonderful and that we will maybe enhance the safety measures at next year's event. So with that, I'd move to item number two. I'd like to brief the council. You're aware at our last meeting that we've been contacted by two of the youth involved in the vandalism of the Assembly of God Church and the city jail. I won't characterize the nature of the meeting I had with them. There was a highly emotional and it was highly charged meeting on a number of levels, talking to two teenagers, which I did. Tomorrow, I will be meeting with their mother because we may need to enlist their services to make this happen. But that meeting will take place tomorrow at 10:30. If it's successful, then we'll have a working relationship with them in which Ned Belter will kind of provide some opportunities for service and Pastor Tracy Durham will be likewise. But the preponderance of the service will be for the church, about that much at the moment. But I'll brief you further when I get more information tomorrow. Sounds kind of sketchy, I know, but they're teenagers and so we won't get into too much of what's driving them. Okay, item number three. I was the, I'm pleased to report that tomorrow night at four o'clock here in the city hall, Rob White will be present with all of the members of our planning committee from Wood. And so four of them will be sworn in, and they'll be given a briefing, and then I think there will be subsequent meetings planned thereafter. If any of you would like to come to witness that, you are certainly invited to do so.
Mr. White did, Rob White did express desire to meet any council members who wanted to come.
Yeah. He did tour the city, stayed for yesterday?
Oh, no, that was the engineer.
Probably after more set.
Rob came down ages ago, yeah.
That's all that I have on the mayor's report, so I would proceed with the agenda approval. And Rob Snazza, candidate for sheriff for 2014, is present with us and indicated he would like to be inserted on the agenda for some brief comments. So that's the only change I would suggest. I would wait council action.
I'll put a motion forward to approve the agenda as written, except we want an addition for Sheriff Rob Snazza to make a report.
Okay. Performed the motions submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve the agenda with the addition of Mr. Rob Snazza. I'd include that right after this.
I'm wondering if the Park Board might have a report.
Just on the vandalism there, okay?
Oh, okay.
I didn't, I saw it.
Okay. I don't know, do you want to add it as?
Would you like to amend it?
Add it in or whatever.
Do you want to amend that?
I don't mind amending that. We'll change the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Rob Snazza and a report by Steve Crone from the Park Board.
Okay. Okay, you've heard that, amend, the motion is so amended. Do we have a second? Mr. Fettison has seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's proceed now with those two reports.
Well, good evening, council. I'm sorry, I haven't been here for a while, been tied up on some other things going on. But a couple of things I want to report about is some good news that I was talking to Jill and some of the other councilmen. We got some of the ordinances passed. I want to, at some point, sit down with Jill, get a time where we can work some things out, how we're going to put this in the system. Because in order to enforce this, a lot of times, if Lewis County Sheriff's Office is going to assist in enforcing some of the ordinances, how we're going to do it, I'm going to have to talk to the Chief Seaver if we're going to be a part of that or if we're not. But if we are, we could put this information, these new ordinances will go in what we call a scepter, so that if we pull up a city of Vader, that they'll have information of what violations it is and what the punishment is, you know, is it a citation or what kind of citation, what the degree of citation it can be. So we're going to need to work on some of that new information, and I'll get with Chief Seaver. But if we're going to continue our contract, I think it's important that we seriously consider thinking about putting those in there. I know at one point, we talked to the city attorney about do we just do the referrals through the city, but if you get in through your city attorney, if we're going to do the referrals or if we're going to do some enforcement where we actually issue the citation. There's, it goes two ways to do it because you're going to have to do some type of investigative, a formal type of investigation. You're going to take photographs, you're going to write a report, you still have to submit all that. And so the sheriff's office, we could do it, we could find out a way, we need to work together and figure out how we want to do that and go forth with that because I know we've been working on that for a while. So I think the council needs to think about how we want to proceed with that at some point. I'll sit down with Jill and I'll try to get some answers so that we have it for the next time I see you folks. The other issue is, I just got an email or a letter yesterday indicating the property that Mr. Sullivan was on, and I know that we were serving papers on that. I don't know if that paperwork was served either today or yesterday, I'm not sure on that. I'm going to follow up for you on that. We've been monitoring some activity, of course, that occurred at the church and some other places. We're still working on some activity, some criminal activity down in the south end here. A lot of activities occurring right outside the city. I know there was a couple incidents inside the city, I can't be specific on some of those incidents, but I know we've dealt with some, and I know we've put a couple people in our facility because of being called out. But overall, we're still, we're still on target for what we generally do. We generally produce about 200 case numbers a year through the city of Vader, and we're pretty much on target with that right now. So I'm not seeing any huge increases that we're used to seeing, but we're usually on task for around 200 case numbers. And things kind of pick up, always pick up during the summer, especially with the young kids out or activity occurring, so that's what we're seeing right now. Other than those, I've checked on F Street a few times. I know Sergeant Brain's been out quite a bit out here, talking to a lot of people, making some contacts. So my offer's up to the board, is there any concerns that you folks have that I need to take back to our troops to address? And I always encourage you that if you, as a council member, have questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to call me personally, and we'll see what we, how we can deal with some of the issues that your constituents may come up to you and ask you about. So make sure that you feel free to call me, or Jill has my email, you can always email me as well, and we'll make those, we'll address them right away. So, did anybody have any questions for me at this time?
Nothing I want to make public record of.
Oh, okay.
I'll talk to you after if you're still here.
I'm working on, okay. I'm working on still being a good guy, so.
Does the county sheriff's department provide any enhanced coverage for the STP?
We're working on, I know the city of Winlock is providing us coverage, I know I have, I have, that is a double day, I think we have a double shift on that. I can find out, I know that Sergeant Brain is working on, I'll work with him. I know that county will have a couple of their officers out. We try to check the routes, the ways they're going, you know, especially on Sunday, you know, because Sunday is usually the, late Saturday afternoon, early Sunday is when we get a lot of traffic in the south end that I've noticed, because a lot of the traffic stops here for Saturday evening and then picks up. So we'll have our regular crews out, I think I've got a couple extra guys working down in this area, we'll try to keep them out and about. But, and I'll get with Sergeant Brain and see if we can do some adjustments. Usually if I have a double shift on a Saturday, I let them work a full eight-hour shift instead of splitting it up. We split it up at times. I usually leave it up to the individual officers, how they want to do it, four hours here or four hours there, but I think we'll try to combine those at times so we'll get the peak hours of the STP run down here, so we'll work on that.
I'm not aware of any problems you've ever had, but I know...
Usually it's on the, it's on the highways, you know, with the vehicle traffic.
Just a lot of traffic, that's all.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of traffic. So we're working on, and we, of course, the same time we're having Tito Cheese Day, so be aware of that, it's, you know, a lot of activities going on in the sheriff's office. So anything else, any questions, comments, concerns? All right.
I think the Park Board has some concerns, so when he makes his report, then...
Okay. And I can get with Steve later too to discuss some what we need to do on some patrol ops and let patrol officers know. We've been putting out, we're pretty good about putting out all the information out here, and I know the guys have done pretty good coming down here, responding quickly and taking care of matters.
Yeah, I personally would be remiss if I didn't mention that I'm extremely impressed with the response time. Anything's been brought to my attention, and I've been pretty impressed with how quickly you are to send officers out, so.
Well, I know we're kind of stressing, we've got a couple suspendeds out of this, out of city, and we've gotten some DUI and a couple assaults. So if that happens, that affects the city budget, of course, because the city attorney's going through that. But, you know, you just got to understand, we're working with you folks, and these things come to us, you know, a lot of times, they just happen upon us and we're just dealing with addressing those issues. So, all right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can we pass the phone over to our Park Board chairman?
Today, Steve, come on. It'd be sometimes enough to move midnight. Well, really one major item. I mowed the park here the last few days, and on the south end of the park by the river, we've had a six-inch or a six-foot concrete riser. It's been kind of a fire pit that has been there for, with a grill grate on top of it. Well, in the last week or so, someone has removed it. I don't know how they did, it's a lot of weight. The entire track's...
It's gone?
Yeah.
The concrete too?
The concrete, the whole thing is gone.
It's on the south, the south ends, down that, the bend where it bends down by the river?
Yeah, then you go back in to the right there.
Are we closing the gate?
No, we aren't.
Okay.
We could talk, we've had, our question was, how can we get the clothes, do we have, can you guys come by and do that?
Well, we can, we can work something out when we're working here to make, to ensure that it's closing, but the problem is, we probably need to work on that. My suggestion is getting the gate closed at dusk. And the only reason I say that is because if we don't keep it closed, we're inviting people to come down to the park at night, and at times, we're not always down there. So if it's, if they want to go down there, walk down there like we do during the winter hours, that's fine, but what we're doing is we're inviting traffic in late at night on patrol, that would be a concern. And I know, I know it's an inconvenience to always go down there and lock that gate too. Something to think about.
Well, I've heard them steal everything involving metal, but can you recycle cement?
I don't think so. Someone recycle it to their barbecue pit.
I'm sure it's somewhere.
I wish someone would steal that big circular thing by the fire department.
The fire department wants that thing, they're going to turn it into a planter.
Also, for Rob's information, kitty corner here, across street from the fire station, that house on the corner.
Yeah.
There's been an SUV, a Chevy, pile or something in park there for, since they left.
Many believe that.
I know it was in the last week or so, someone's taken all the tires off, they've been sitting on the ground.
Yep, I saw that.
You're talking right over here, right across the...
Yeah.
I'll check it out today. Do we, is the house abandoned?
The car and the house are both abandoned.
Floor closed, yeah.
Floor closed, um...
Okay, so if it's on private property, I guess we could look at some ordinances and see if we could, how the vehicle impacted due to a nuisance and criminal activity. I'll, I'll work on that tonight.
It could be our first junk vehicle.
Well, I'll see what I can do tonight.
We passed the, wait, we passed the junk vehicle ordinance on our last council meeting, so we have the ordinance in place.
I'll check it out when I leave here tonight.
No wheels would qualify as...
Yeah.
Under the ordinance, I think.
No plates, no wheels.
And if someone wants to break the windows and...
No, I don't do that.
No, strike that.
I'm sure it's more than 10 years old, so...
I think that's all I've got to say for now, so.
There was, Ned, our public works employee, also mentioned that there's been some other activity down there at the park that he hasn't reported, like seeing that somebody went actually down to the hill to the water and then was, you know, digging up the dirt with their truck and to get out, and so there were big...
There were two great big tracks coming up the hill.
So he says there's been some other activity going on around there that's...
I was there the other day, and I noticed some kids out on the one side, and I didn't see, I saw a couple vehicles, three vehicles parked on one side, but nothing down at that end. That is very accessible all the way down to the river for vehicles.
Oh, also, they did chop on the trees down right there too.
That's kind of a big deal.
They chopped a tree?
Yeah. They took an axe and chopped it, it's laying in the river. Ned and I are going to try and get it pulled up.
You can't, can't take it out of the river.
Don't tell, don't, don't say anything to anybody for doing that.
You can't take it out of the river.
Well, it's an eyesore and it's...
I'm telling you, Department of Natural Resources will be all the worst to pull it out.
Well, they should be, so much, they should be notified, but it shouldn't be in the river , should it?
Well, I can talk to you about it afterwards, is what they've told me in the past.
Okay, yeah.
They're here to refresh.
The council may want to consider some security measures, video camera or whatever, but maybe if we get feedback from the sheriff's department, we can consider actions at our next meeting to help the Park Board try to stay on top of this sort of thing too. Okay, well, thank you for those reports. Let's proceed with the voucher approvals.
Minutes.
Minutes approval, yes. Thank you for June 26th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 26th as written.
Okay, Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'd make a second.
Taken by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, voucher approvals.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of July 2014 in the amount of $34,064.51.
Okay, heard the motion submitted by Mr. Schei as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Taken by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Help a comment?
Then...
Now, let's proceed with unfinished business. Item number one, this is a continuation of an item tabled at our last meeting for additional consideration. I'm hoping that the council can take some action tonight relating to ordinance 2014-14 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. I'm confident that you have the paperwork relating to that ordinance, and hope that you've had a chance to review it, and I'm feeling more comfortable with it. I know that members of the council were not present at our last meeting, we're hoping to hear from relating to it, so.
Well, I get this thing in the road, I'll put a motion on the table. And I'll move to adopt ordinance 2014-14, adopting and amending the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, UCADB. To reference the city's possible use of state law nuisance abatement procedures to make violations of the UCADB subject to criminal penalties and to identify those violations and penalties to substitute the hearing examiner for the decision-maker on appeals of the notices and ordinances issued by the building official. To establish the deadline to filing appeal as 15 days after issuance of notice or order and to eliminate provisions of the UCADB that are duplicative of the rules of procedure adopted by the city's hearing examiner, amending the following sections of UCADB 103, 201-2, 201-3, 202, 203, comma, 205, 302, 501-1, repealing section 601, 602, 603, 604, and 605, and adding a new section 601. I think I got it all.
Yeah, well read.
You can tell an attorney wrote that.
You heard the motion, it's submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve the ordinance 2014-14 as read. Do we have a second?
I'd second that.
Taken by Mr. Olson. Now, do we have a comment or feedback from members of the council? Move, now we should have a drum roll. I personally believe that if we can in fact utilize the 1997 Uniform Code as written, and that we can in fact enforce it, which I believe we can, personnel that we've recently hired, and firm determination on part of the city council and the mayor, which you're about to find out, this would be a historic moment in the city of Vader. So, no comment from council members? I hear none? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I have to start, after two or three years of trying, they were out.
I think I do the same.
Most other cities in the country use this, why not?
Okay, we're going to begin to take aim at some of our...
Gerolics.
Yeah, yes, and we'll see if we can clean up this community. All right, item number two, ordinance 2014-16, renewal of interim zoning ordinance, number 2014-02, banning medical and recreational marijuana uses and activities. Now, if you're aware, a lot of interaction has been taking place with our city attorney. We're being extremely cautious and meticulous in our efforts to proceed legally with the rights that the city council has relating to this matter. So this document that you have reflects the latest interaction from our city attorney relating to it. If you've had a chance to review it, we'll turn the time over to the council for discussion and action.
I'll make a motion to, I guess I need to read it.
There's two different ones. Do the first one, if that's what you...
Right, I was reading that thing.
I think what it's saying is to read the heading on the ordinance page itself.
Right. All right, I've got to put the pieces together.
Here's the other one.
Yeah, so, I move to approve, make a motion, I move to approve ordinance number 2014-16, an ordinance of the city of Vader, Washington, relating to the recreational and medical use of marijuana, renewing the interim zoning ordinance adopted in Vader, ordinance number 2014-02, prohibiting the citing, establishment, and operation of any structures, property, or uses relating to recreational or medical marijuana production, processing, cultivation, storage, sale, delivery, exchange, or barter, to be in effect until the city adopts a permanent zoning regulation on the same subject, which includes a prohibition on the submission of business license applications for such uses. This interim ordinance to be effective immediately, setting six months as the effective period of this renewal of the interim... of this renewal of the interim zoning ordinance, and establishing the date of a public hearing on the renewal of this interim zoning ordinance within sixty days.
Okay, we've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Shai to approve ordinance two thousand fourteen dash sixteen, as read.
I'll second that.
Submitted by Mr. Flynn. Now is the opportunity of the council to provide observation, commentary, feedback on that motion.
Hold on. I have a few things I wanted to share. If you pass these down. Oh, yes. So these, my concern at this point is all of the information that I'm getting out of Denver and some Massachusetts regarding the odor, odor issues. On the first page, there's a article from KKTB out of Denver, which is, I believe it's the ABC affiliate down there. And this woman is standing, well, you can see the facility behind her, she's standing on her porch, and you can see a caption there, says, eleven news reporter Gina Stapihto spoke with one resident who lives within sight of one of the grow operations. She said, the news reporter says, I can smell the marijuana, you can smell it right here. The resident says, yeah, it's very strong. News reporter says, wow. The resident says, it's been like this for the past two days. So you can see that indoor grow operation there and how far they are from it. And then this is the, the next page is the, the full news article. So, the, the Denver Post in April says, from January first to the end of March, Denver's Department of Environmental Health received thirteen odor complaints related to marijuana, according to the spokesman, spokeswoman. So far, all complaints have been stemmed from the cultivation of the plant in commercial grow operations, in a few cases, personal grows in residential neighborhoods. Some callers didn't even know the musky aroma was pot until the city came on to scene to investigate. ABC Channel seven in Denver, while Colorado law doesn't require odor control, the inspectors are recommending installing activated carbon filtration systems to help mitigate the local complaints. All of the air that exhausted outside goes through these large ceiling mounted devices. There are two sets of four filters inside the one, inside the one warehouse, they are changed every six months. The manager says it's a significant expense. So, the hightimes.com, which is an enthusiast site for recreation, recreational users and growers alike, this was environmental control tips for year-round grow operations. They said, grow room air can get funky whether you vent to the outside or recirculate the air in a controlled environment agricultural setup. To keep the air fresh for any passerby, as well as to keep it free of spores, pollen, and other contaminants, an activated carbon scrubber is a great choice. However, these scrubbers are only reliable when you install and operate them as directed with the proper fan sizing and related maximum humidity levels. And, and then back page, so currently, our area is regulated by the Southwest Clean Air Agency, there's a variety of regional areas within, in the state, and ours is the Southwest Clean Air Agency. They're responsible for enforcing federal, state, and local air quality standards and regulations in Clark, Calhoun, Lewis, Skimania, and Waukeaham Counties. Our mission is to preserve and enhance air quality in Southwest Washington. So this is the meeting minutes from March sixth, twenty fourteen, from the Southwest Clean Air Agency. Mr. Jensen is one of the board members. Mr. Jensen asked what role the Southwest Clean Air Agency will have with marijuana growing operations. He said he has been given the impression that there could be a lot of odor associated with these facilities. Mr. Elliott responded that the SWCAA has recently learned more information about the types of marijuana growing and recognizes Paul Morrissey, SWCAA's chief engineer. Mr. Morrissey explained that the SWCAA's role will depend on how the facility plans their operation. Said if the marijuana growing operation has any equipment that emits to the ambient air, then the SWCAA would be involved. Mr. Morrissey said one operation in Vancouver, Washington, has already decided that they will be installing carbon filters on their exhaust, which will most likely mean the SWCAA does not need to be involved. Mr. Morrissey said that if the proposal is for a solvent basis operation, SWCAA might be involved, but again, each facility will need to be reviewed and determination need to be made. The Washington State Code one seven three dash four hundred dash zero four zero five, section five, so the general standards for maximum emissions about any, any odors. So, number five, odors. Any person who shall cause or allow the generation of any odor from any source or activity, which may unreasonably interfere with any other person's, property owner's use or enjoyment of his property, must use recognized good practice and procedures to reduce these odors to a reasonable minimum. And under the, the air quality permits that would need to be applied for, they specify that facilities that receive odor complaints can be subject to fines or be required to add air filtration equipment. My last section here, this is a city of Vancouver, what they did when they implemented their five oh two. In March twenty fourteen, the city adopted local zoning standards for locating state licensed facilities, which also require obtaining a business license, they can be indoor facilities only, retail facilities to locate in a community and general commercial zones only, producing and processing facilities to locate in light and heavy industrial areas only, zones only, compliance with the Southwest Washington Clean Air Agency outdoor standards. Odor standards, marijuana products and cash to be locked and constructed or secured safe at eleven P M closing times, which are not the issue at the moment. So, we have a zone, we have a, a zone for industrial, and we do not have specifications on what kind of odors we will and will not allow coming from them. Not only that, we, our industrial area should have noise standards, also, we should have ordinances stating what kind of wastewater can be drained, discharged into our sewer system, whether it contains industrial contaminants, fertilizers, that kinds of things, what we can and cannot support. So I believe our zoning needs quite a bit of updating to actually be.
Effective.
Right, well, we have, we have a zone, we have, we have an industrial area, but we don't have any rules associated with it. And while we're focusing on marijuana, this could be any odorous industry. This could be an asphalt company, this could be pulp and paper, this could be giant composting, rubbers, plastics, any number of things that cause odors. And we should have specified that when we originally set out this industrial area, and we never did. So now is our chance to do that.
Other comments?
To adjust the current ordinances is separate from what we're bringing up for a vote tonight.
It is.
It is a good time to bring, bring the awareness up, but it should not affect what we decide one way or the other, puts on the table. So.
We did have an indication, remember the audience, that they'd like to provide some input or feedback on the topic.
Sure.
Yes, Steve. I think you all are ignorant on that whole situation, what you just said on that factor, without having any, any industrial property of any kind that are going on in that area, and having comments being said to this newspaper person that will be quoted very easily, to the point of what goes into the river, what flows from the river, what's taken from the river, from either the points of overspillage of chemicals, the oils that come out underneath railroad tracks, the septic that follow into the system of the river, anything that falls along your state, your city parks that are in your parks as they are now, fifty gallon barrels of oil that are overflowing into your water. Really need to watch out what you all are got going into your park system before you start planning the industrial park, which don't have any people that are actually approved, approved for this or that, that you're trying to dismay from the corporations that would love to start in that, that you're basically pushing away. Thank you.
Thanks, very good. Well, I know for a fact that we still haven't heard the shoreline analysis from Grant Osborne and Mr. Hinton, who has yet to provide a report to the council, as far as the state environmental protection agencies guidelines relating to a property that is the westerly border of that. So, that is yet another issue that wasn't mentioned in your presentation, but council obviously needs to be made aware. Do we have a date for that presentation there?
No, it had to get pushed back. I know that some of the processes that needed to happen have already happened, I'm not sure how much more needs to happen, so I'm sorry, I don't know exactly a date. We just got a determination, the SEPA determination back today. So, once that's passed on to John Hinton, then we'll know, then I can find out what the next steps are, so I can just let you know as I find out.
I would speculate that within a month, that you're going to, so if council is considering a six-month extension, it wouldn't require a whole six months, but I know that this sounds like an issue that ought to be explored, and if we can get Mr. Hinton's presentation within the next month, then maybe the council will have time to do something more expeditiously six months from now. I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but Carol Morrison, our city attorney, would encourage the council to not take the whole six months during this next cycle. Is that basically what she's encouraging? Okay, so, well, well, then, any other comments?
Well, yeah, I, I think what Mr. Shai reported on there was an addition of a ordinance that needs to be investigated. And so, that's areas we do need to investigate, look into, set some standards, if we're going to, you know, we should have some kind of standards. I know all of it doesn't deal with the bill that's on the table, but it is something that we need to look into.
Well, it does, it, it does apply, because if we're going to have a zoning ordinance for marijuana, we need to, we need to specify certain standards, whether that be odor control situations, or discharge, water discharge into our sewer treatment facility, we need to have certain standards. And it's, it's to protect ourselves, it's to protect the city, you know, if, if, it could affect the livability and the desirability of other people to want to move to town.
Exactly.
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not just a simple, we need some jobs, it's, it could affect the entire city while you're standing on your back porch. And we need, the city needs to protect itself.
We got caught once with our pants down, not prepared for what we're facing, so it's about time to start preparing. So, this gives us six months to get a few things adjusted as far, and find out more facts on the marijuana. So my opinion is we pass it. And then during that process time, we have to have sixty days, we have to set a date for the public hearing, and that should give us enough time to get all the information from everybody else in, so we're not being called ignorant. And move one step at a time, and we have, we do have an industrial area, and we have to set standards for businesses coming in. Now, we'd rather have businesses that were not odor-causing manufacturing, it'd be nice to have some small manufacturing type businesses that are all self-contained and they're not odor-producing, but this isn't a perfect world, so we have to be ready for whatever comes.
Well, with the marijuana production, there are ways to make it fully odor, odor negative. Then Middlesex, Massachusetts, Middlesex Integrated Medicine, they submit a medical marijuana grow application. The application was thirty thousand dollars to cut, just the application. And in their application, which was like thirty pages long, I believe, they say that their HVAC system, we are also proud to say that the system has a built-in industrial activated carbon filtration system that reduces any odor signature to zero, even within five feet of the production facility. So there are things that can be done in an industrial situation, even beyond just marijuana, and we could require things like that when in our, in our industrial area for, for things that are going to be odorous, things we need to consider and get in our ordinance.
Well, research, okay. Do we have a second for this amendment?
We did, we already had a second.
You asked, I thought. Then, is there any other input or feedback? Then let's put this matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, we did have four, that's a super majority, so this ordinance will be considered in effect immediately.
We have one more step to it, though. We need to set a date by motion for the public hearing for passing this ordinance. You see, on your agenda, Bill, for that, that's the second.
Yep.
And we can do that during a council meeting, so if you just want to, it has to be at least, it can't be this next coming council meeting, but it can be any time after that.
So, we have.
That would be the next one in July, why don't we do the first one in August?
That would be the fourteenth of August.
And that would still have people around for the summer, so that would be a good time to have it.
We do have a public hearing scheduled for that meeting already for a different topic.
I might be out of town.
And I know that I will be as well.
Okay.
Seven?
No, fourteenth, because it says second and fourth Thursday.
What's the next date?
The next one is the twenty eighth, and that's going to be Memorial Day weekend, so I don't know if that will be an issue. That won't be Memorial Day weekend?
Labor Day.
Labor Day, I'm sorry, Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, that's Labor Day.
That's a Thursday, so weekend's Friday, so.
Yeah.
What's the difference?
Week weekend.
The next one would be September eleventh.
That's getting beyond sixty days.
Yeah.
So it has to be the twenty eighth of August, then?
Yeah, the twenty eighth, the fourteenth or the twenty eighth.
The fourteenth, you already have one, so let's do it the twenty eighth.
But, I mean, I'm just saying, you would have a lot going on this one fourteenth meeting.
Yeah, we'll do the twenty eighth, and it sounds all right to me.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Shai? Looks like we have a general consensus.
So I don't go anywhere, so I'm always here. I'm just late.
So that has to be done in a motion, if you don't mind?
I recommend, I'll get, put a motion on the table, and I recommend that the date of the public hearing on the continued maintenance of the interim zoning ordinance be set for the twenty eighth of August nineteen, no, two thousand fourteen, which is less than sixty days after today. I could say nineteen, that's less than.
He's like nineteen, one?
I live in the past.
Okay, I've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to establish a date for the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a second for it. All right, Mr. Olson, any commentary? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Page seven.
The twenty eighth of August.
That'll be during the city council meeting. Last item on our agenda is wastewater topics. Item A, as councils are aware, we've been challenged to identify an individual who felt comfortable, we've advertised for it, and I can tell you that I'm pleased to report that I was able to interview one of the individuals who submitted an application for that position at length, I think for yesterday, and the individual's name is Teresa Yost, and she currently serves as the Public Works Director for the City of PL. We went over in great detail the expectations for the position with the city of Vader, be part-time employee. She is extremely confident that she can meet those requirements, she was highly recommended by officials with Department of Ecology, Carl Jones in particular, and PL community leaders. And so. And so, and I could go on, but please, I don't know, we're in a public meeting, that we need to go too much into her background, but she has no criminal record, and is not a drug user, and is willing to undergo whatever tests we, and background checks we would like to do to confirm that. But all that having been said, I would, but one of the issues, well, first of all, we need to confirm my nomination of this individual by the council. About one of the questions involved, it was advertised a salary between nineteen dollars and twenty-one dollars, depending on experience. And she has a Level One operator permit, and she was going to test for her Group Two certification level yesterday. And now, you heard, but we only need a Level One for the position out there. You should be aware that we have purchased all the equipment necessary to recertify our lab, and that was approved, if I'm not mistaken, by Carl Jones, when he came out. So everything's been calibrated and tested, so we no longer need to utilize the services of the Wynn Lock Waste Treatment Lab unless.
Not exactly, we, it takes a few weeks for the accreditation process.
But this will free, this will free Neva up, too. This will free Neva up.
Yes.
Yes, exactly, which was one of our main.
Right.
However.
We'll wait with Wynn Lock, and then we'll be accredited.
Sure, there'll be a transition phase there. But I'm very pleased with how it's all working out. She could, began effective immediately, depending on the council's action tonight. But I told her perhaps next week. One of the issues that council would have to decide, my decision, would be the pay that she would get. My recommendation is that she would be, she'd be supportive of, of anything from nineteen dollars to twenty-one. But I would suggest she start at nineteen dollars and fifty cents. But first, I guess we need to get the council, oh, she, one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is that she's got a reputation for being extremely meticulous, and her lab, and I confirmed this with Carl Jones, is white glove type operation, very fastidious and highly attentive to detail and planning. Which would be something, my sense of experience would be at first, City of Bader. So with that having been said, I'm submitting her name, Teresa Yost, to the council for your confirmatory vote.
Can I ask what the, how that will work with, and she's, works in PL, she's going to be coming all the way here, are we going to pay mileage as well?
No, she's not asking for that. It'd take about a twenty-five minute drive for her, she'd take the back road through PL.
Okay.
And she would ask for flexibility. We would need to have her here five days a week, and she would hope that she could come on a Saturday and a Sunday. But if she gets off early enough, she could make that commute.
How many hours a week is that?
That's my next question.
Yeah, it was, we're anticipating twelve hours a week, that's the figure that has been floated out there. It may take an hour or two more, depending on situations, but that's the figure we've utilized. One of the questions was if she takes a holiday, and she, she's willing to comply with all of the guidelines set forth in our employee handbook. So she'd be subject to all of the stipulations there, which I won't want to share with you, but you can find out from Jill.
Yeah, if she takes a break, she could, I'm sure she'd co-op with the people in Wynn Lock and bring them in here, and then she'd probably help them when they're on vacation.
Neva's indicated that if there's a need for someone to come in, step in in her absence, that he'd be willing to do that. So unless he changes mind in the last two, two days. He's aware of this individual, and he's, he's acquainted with her. So I feel very good about this. So I would wait the council approval.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make the motion to confirm Teresa Yost for the wastewater treatment operator, Level One.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, would you insert a pay recommendation?
With the recommend.
You don't have to take my recommendation.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll make this motion at nineteen fifty.
Okay, at nineteen fifty per hour. Okay, then you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Olson to approve Teresa Yost for employment, part-time employment, in the Public Works position, that's been advertised at nineteen dollars and fifty cents per hour. And we have a second for that motion.
Nelson.
Second by Mr. Fennessey. Okay, official comments, questions, terms?
I'm glad you started at nineteen fifty, because then we have room to grow.
Yes.
I don't want to start high and then be stuck.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then with that, let's put this matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, well, we are almost fully staffed again. Okay, last item, three B, council review of the status of CDBG site sewer project. Seven thirty, we're now in, I'm going to talk fast here, because most of this will be informational. We're probably aware, maybe even attended, have two of the three workshops. I went to the first one, wasn't able to attend the second, got feedback on it, and I'll tell you that the outcome from both of those, as far as completed applications, is dismal. We've had five completed applications submitted, maybe two more today, we've got potential five more that may emerge. And frankly, it's disconcerting. We have till the twenty-fourth of July to get as many as we can.
Did you get anybody from up on F Street?
I'm not sure, I don't know all the ones that Paula has received, so I'm not sure if they're up there. I haven't heard anything personal from anyone up there.
My.
But they're less than twenty years old, aren't they?
Most of them are, yeah.
Yeah. All the Waffle ones anyways.
Yeah.
So they would be PVC?
They would, they would need to be replaced.
To tell you that feedback I've gotten, and I've talked through a number of individuals who have approached me, or just stumbled across and we discussed the matter, confusion abounds with the letter that's sent. And disgruntled where there's not confusion. Those who have discovered that they don't qualify, figure this, the city officials are addle-brained and are just, are going to try and make them pay for something that they might understand needs to be done. They don't want to pay for it, and when you try to explain to them that the city's going to make an effort when we identify our alternative to get funding to help cover that expense, they don't want to listen. They just don't want to undergo the hassle and aggravation of engaging in this process. And I can tell you, it's interesting, to say the least. But I can tell you, there's a little dark cloud looming on the horizon, too, because we've orchestrated a teleconference call for Monday at eleven with Kathy Reed and the Department of Commerce, I believe, employee, is Carmen?
Connie Rivera.
Okay.
She's the person with some.
Yes, who's beginning to get concerned that City of Bader may have this upside down. She's concerned that we're taking monies that were allocated to repair the site, or, I mean, the manholes. There are about forty-seven of them approximately, we're only focusing on thirty-two. And the money was allocated to repair the city line and the manholes. If we take some of the money and use it to pay for the private property section, and we don't have enough to cover the manholes, then we're going to have to iron out that little problem in her mind Tuesday morning. But that'll involve myself, Kathy Reed, and we'll get our city parks involved as well in it. So, but right now, I'm going to push for repair of the manholes, and maybe it's fortuitous that we're getting a very miniscule turnout from those who might qualify financially. If there's somebody who doesn't qualify financially, then we're telling them to, don't panic, just to wait until we get our report from DHC, which you should know will be on August fifth. August fifth, they're going to come here for a workshop and give us our, hopefully our five alternatives. And the council will select a number of those for additional analysis. So that'll begin the process of identifying what, what it might be and how much it might cost. And then we can begin to go for monies that might alleviate the concerns of property owners who don't qualify for this grant funding. It's on Mac.
I hear your phone ringing, Steve.
Wow. Yeah. Hello, hello? Hello, you two?
Run to the bathroom.
It's called the city.
Oh, so I can't say no.
Oh, it's okay, don't worry, we're not arguing.
All right, just, okay.
I do that all the time, Steve, don't forget it. August the fifth?
Oh, August fifth, so that's when DHC will be providing the council that report. But we have until July twenty-fourth, so in consultation with our city park, who, we're probably going to begin to make phone calls. And we have fourteen days to see if we can roust out some of those who qualify for this free money, so to speak. Would there be any objection on the part of council members if we asked you to phone call four or five people? Phone call, people who pay their waste utility bills? And make phone calls to try and convince them to fill out their form? What if we suggested that? I know I'm willing to make phone calls, but if we had our staff make ten calls a day for the next ten workdays, that's a hundred. And if we added five each, that would be thirty, hundred and thirty.
How many people do we have calling?
How much room do we have? The anticipated amount was for eighty to qualify.
Yeah, we're good.
I'll take, I'll do something, I, you know, they can hang up me just as well as they can hang up on you. I've talked to a lot of people personally, so.
Being positive.
Thank you, Mr. Council, thank you very much, that's always good, I like doing that for off the mayor, yes.
The biggest, probably one of the biggest issues that I have heard, and I hear from a lot of people as they come in, is that a lot of them either don't understand what's going on, and so they figure, oh, this is over my head, I don't know. They just put it aside, so they don't really understand what's going on. And, or they think they don't qualify, without even looking at the chart. Because all they hear is, when you say low to moderate income, they just hear low income, and they think, oh, well, I'm not on welfare or whatever, so I don't qualify. And that's not the case. It, for a family of four, it's upwards of fifty-five thousand dollars a year adjusted income, and so, I mean, that's not, that's not someone who's on welfare, I mean, that's a decent wage. And so I think people, I think the biggest misconception is those two things, and they just need a little bit of understanding. You know, this is what's going on, let me explain to you, replacing these side sewers, this is why. This money is coming from the feds, which is your tax money, that they're giving back to us to fix your property. And if you don't, it's going to go back to the feds again. You know, do you, that's one of the things when, when I say that to people, they're like, this is my money? What? Oh. So what they understand that, you know, what the situation is, is free money didn't go over very well when I tried to use that, because really, nothing's free, but, you know, it is their money, and it's going to go back to the government if they don't use it. So why not use it? And, well, I did mine, I'm sure mine's fine, or, or, well, we'll let people who are more in need use this money, so we won't apply. Please don't, please use this money. Nothing looks worse on a grant application than saying, oh, by the way, we gave you back the grant money you gave us before. They don't like to see that, they like to see that you use what you've been given, and so it's important that we do this. So that's why we're trying this outreach, being that we only have two weeks left before the application dates close, and we've got to make decisions, so anything we can do to, talk to your neighbors, people you see at the street. I know it's kind of awkward, but please, fill out your side sewer applications.
All right, Joe, let's talk about your sewer.
I know, I know, but it's so important, and when they realize that what you're doing, and they hear it from someone face-to-face, and not just a stack of letters, you know, or voice-to-voice on the phone, it helps, I think, helps the understanding level go up, and so that's my plea.
Okay, well, our next workshop is next.
Next Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, oh, we have.
Next Thursday, yeah.
One week from today.
We want to slam, get it slammed, so that we have barely enough time.
I would propose that if you could make a list, would there be anyone opposed to making phone calls?
I'll even include talking points, if you want to, if you would like helping.
So if you could get a list of to each of us, and if we could call, and even extend an invitation to come to the workshop, that some of, we can definitively tell them about.
Which workshop, the seventeenth?
Next Thursday, next week.
Right here, five to seven.
Okay, then let's set that strategy in motion, and then we will get the talking points down, and we'll have our administrative employees begin to make phone calls themselves, you know, if we could do the blanket this. Okay, then I think that would pretty much carry us, or concludes the talking points I want done now. So are there any other comments from the council? If not, then adjourn this.